I'm not staying here.
Since we're waiting to officially start, can we speak on records?
Yeah.
Okay, you know, I've been looking for an assistant for months now. I finally found my ideal applicant. It was like she was dropped from heaven. She has, she did, she had no election experience. She just moved here. She married a Jones County and she's from Tennessee. Just recently moved back. Like orange this week. While she was in Tennessee, she had fourteen years' experience with the Davidson County Sheriff.
Yeah, we're about to be started.
She knows what it's like working for government. She's very, very kind of following laws.
We're about ready to go.
I totally stopped all her
I want to jump to the next question.
Social media, everything was very Christian, very clean. I wanted to offer her the job. She's making sixteen now. I could get this position up to fifteen fifty-nine if it was allowed. I would love to have her seventy-four.
Let's go ahead to Bill.
Yeah.
Huh? We're off, we're off record.
Off the record. I understand that.
Yeah. Were you recording that? Mm, okay. Okay, we're streaming. Alright, that's gonna be a HR, HR Jason.
I went to Shannon and she said according to the study, we'd be getting up to the fifteen fifty-nine because of no elections experience.
But then, just once she gets some certification, she can get.
But no, I mean, you're not gonna, I'm not gonna find anybody with elections experience. Because once you get out of the hole, you don't wanna get back in.
Alright, so we'll get a work session. I need a motion to go into a work session.
Go ahead.
Second.
Second, all pay, right?
Right.
Alright, good, now, hi. Oh, hey, Dela. I'm looking for you. I, I knew where, I heard you here somewhere.
I got starburst over here for us.
What, you, where are you at this time? Africa?
I know we're in Africa last month, the Dominican this month, and next month Thailand.
Okay.
Hey, my client is interested in up travel, so let's make it happen.
Alright. Good deal. Alright, who'd like to start this off?
Jason.
Jason.
Not like Bob and Jerry.
So, after the last meeting, I think I mentioned there that there was some conversation about four H. And I think I mentioned there that I had had some conversation with the superintendent about some of their potential sites. I believe it was the day after the last meeting, we went with four H over to the pre-K site. There's some space there that was used by the library when the library was being renovated and then it was being, gonna be used by the Health Department while that renovation's taking place. And so, my thought was maybe after the Health Department comes and goes, four H could, could move into that space. And talking with the superintendent, he's got plans after the Health Department uses it to, to move some BOE administrative offices into that. So, there may be a little bit of a time gap between the Health Department and when they move in, but, but it would still be a very temporary fix for us and I don't think worth the, the trouble to move, move them in and right back out. The, we talked some about the Maggie Caleb site. After the meeting, I pulled the square footage on that. That's about sixty-five thousand total square feet that's, that's there. I think there's about five thousand that's gonna be given to the Caleb Alumni Association. So, it's still about sixty thousand square feet there, you know, that would have to be, to be renovated. He did say that they would be willing to kinda take the, the board over tour of that site if that's something y'all were, were interested in. So, in, in your packet, I'll kinda take you through what, and these are just, go ahead.
Quick question to get back to the school. Is he gonna move all his offices that are currently in, um, Stewart to?
He said they were still gonna use the space on Stewart as well.
Okay, so that's like, okay, I just, I just wish if they're getting ready to move the offices from Stewart down there.
Yeah, I had the same.
You had same, I did it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, he, he needs, he needs both.
And there's nothing at the Knox Center that can be used either?
There's, there's one room right now that's being used as a conference room kinda off and on. But I don't think it's enough to, you know, it's not enough, it wouldn't be any additional space, I don't think, over, over what elections has now. Just one thought I had, there's something in your materials on this. You know, I think going, going back sometime before my time, I think there was a conversation about a new fire station slash headquarters building. And so, I measured, you know, recently constructed one in Dib County and, and you could build something with that, with a similar footprint even out in front of the, the Government Center if you wanted to. And the thought there was that if, if you pulled that out of this building back here, elections could potentially have that whole side of the building. And, and it would meet the needs for somewhere to store a fire engine and, and that type of thing. So, that was one thought. Let's see, another, you know, we've talked off and on about the courthouse expansion there and I think that's something that we know is gonna have to take place eventually. We do have now the, potentially the, the ability to acquire some additional property in that area. And so, you could, you know, you've got plenty of space there to, to build something large enough to accommodate, you know, our existing departments, elections, and anything else you wanted to. So, in addition to the existing courtroom. So, that's something that's kinda out there too that I wanted to, to throw out. So, anyway, that's, those are just kinda some, some thoughts that I had that I wanted to mention to you and turn over to the board for any conversation y'all want.
I had asked Jason earlier, right before the meeting, if we go back to the idea of building Dawn and you, because it's been on the, how many years we talked about a command center and it would give you a place to house the?
A real EOC.
Right. Just a scenario, if we took, built Dawn and you station in the front, took Marion and moved her with the four H here, so she still had the security of the, because you, you want her to remain in this building.
Right, she needs the security.
She would have the security coming into here and have this whole end of that hall for her. That let four H have Dawn's facility and they'd have their own parking and entrance coming and going so that, you know, because they get a lot of after hour stuff, I think, coming in. So, that would give them their own, we probably had to put an entrance or, entrance or something there coming in for Dawn, but it's just a thought, you know, it's, it's a moving around, but it would keep elections in here where it's got security. Four H would have their own area that they can come and go that they don't have to worry about, because I know there's sometimes, you know, there got after hour stuff going on. It's just a thought and it would end up with a command center that's been talking about for a long time. You wouldn't, would you need a, a two bay or what would you need?
I would go as big as I could go.
Well, duh. Oh, man, was that, I know that answer. No, I'm just messing with you, Dawn.
Don't get me wrong on this. The thing that I've been worried about is bringing the, the pumper tanker to the city station. I've been worried about, you've got two city units there and they're holding a thousand gallons apiece. I'm gonna be bringing another three thousand in. And you've got it downstairs up under us. And I've been worried about that a little bit. I mean, it's stuck in my mind, but that would be the perfect, if we had to move, then there's the perfect time to move. And we're close together. I don't wanna move no, a half a mile at the very most from where we at, so nobody changes any ratings. Last thing we wanna do is change our citizens and their insurance.
Also, if you're building that big of a footprint for the courthouse, for the new space, the DA's office is moving over there.
Right.
So, this whole end of the hall is gonna be free as well.
Yeah, so, let's look at it a little bit bigger than that. I agree that if, if this out here, if we built something out here would be a command center. I don't know if, we gotta determine whether it's gonna be a command center, it's gonna be a fire station, because it's two different things to me. I don't know that the city's gonna move here and do we need two stations within twenty blocks of each other here, one county and one city. I would say that this needs to be your central office, training center, EOC, command center, base station. Not bays for a fire station. You may, you may have one that you can put a, a rescue truck in or something like that, yeah, that you could respond out of pretty quick. But I would think that if we're gonna build something, a big enough footprint at the courthouse, let's just go all in so that we get everybody out of this building and either be done with it, get rid of it, rent it out, whatever we're gonna do.
Because the PD's office is also gonna move, right?
Yeah. I would.
Yeah.
So, you're opening up the whole PD's office and all of this?
Because you wanna get away from having the operations of two buildings and the security of two buildings. So, if we put it in one complex over where the courthouse is, you got the law enforcement there to secure the whole building. I mean, I would even say that eventually, elections, you know, everybody moves over there and have even the boardroom, everything moves over there so that we can just do away with this, because this is nothing but cost, cost, cost coming down the road. We've been, how much have we put in this since we've been, last five years? Couple hundred thousand, easy?
Yeah. I mean, being you, I spent on the new one, I'm, you know, I'm.
Well, you, you looked at it thirty.
You talk about a devil's avenue, okay, how much you gonna cost the?
I think that.
I see. Probably might build a multi-story over there with elevators and everything.
Didn't bone, kinda put like fifteen million in there?
So, two hundred thousand in maintenance only, just, just in maintenance on this. Over and above operations is ten million over the next fifty years that we're gonna spend. You won't get fifty years out of this building, I don't think. If you're building a new courthouse, a new complex, you're building it for fifty years, so, I would say. Talk, talk to us, Dela.
Would you still have then four H in this building, because you still need space for them and turn like half of the building into a big training?
Boys and Girls Club could actually move that here with your gym and everything too.
If, you know, we, we, I think we get to a point where we decide, are we, are we selling this or are we renting it out? You know, and, and leasing space in it.
But your courthouse is not gonna be able to house four H EMS.
So EMS is gonna be out here. Alright, I'm gonna just throw something out. I'm, I'm looking long term. What we gonna do with elections? What, we got to think right now. What we gonna do? I mean, do we?
Sir.
The quickest, I'm just thinking, Dawn's project in front would be the quickest. Because we got to be realistic. How many years down the road we talking about a court, you know, the new courthouse? Well, where, where's Dawn going then? I guess what I'm asking. I'm just, you know, the, what we're gonna spend at Maggie Caleb getting it, I mean, I think's gonna be astronomical. I mean, there's a lot. We still, I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff's gonna have to happen at Maggie Caleb to, to get them in there.
Did he mention which part of Caleb?
So.
The Maggie Caleb Foundation?
Let's see, if you look at.
Or how, how long to, how long did he say that four H could potentially be at the school building? Would it give us enough time to build the courthouse, move stuff over there and then bring them back here where they have?
I didn't get that impression. I, I got the impression that pretty much right after the Health Department moves out, they were ready to move some people over there.
So, probably less than.
The Health Department's spending money.
It's not worth it.
The Health Department's actually spending money on that area.
Of course, time to move again.
That the Board of Education can, you know, kind of a, hey, y'all, y'all spend this on it and at the end of the day, we get their improvements.
If the bottom building down here at the very far, the end, down at Dolly Street and Maggie Caleb, that's the alternative school building, the very bottom one.
The old shop.
Just had the old shop. It's got the most recent renovation that was done to it there. The other building in the very center, which is called the B Building, the B Building is connected to what was the main office. It has a open walkway in between it. That is six big, huge classrooms with bathrooms and everything in there. That is a simple, go in there and do some work, lots of open space. And they've also got an office attached to it if they wanted the office there.
Which area was identified for the Caleb group?
Yeah, so which one is the Maggie Caleb Association? The other band room is the small square building down here up under the silver roof. That is the gym there.
So, this one right up here is my understanding is the one that the, that portion of that building is the one that going to the Alumni Association.
So, the very back building?
Yeah, the back left kinda thing.
Yeah.
And then, when we went over there, we walked through this building, we walked through the gym, and we did walk through this building. If you were gonna do something over there, that building makes the most sense.
Yeah, because it, it's been opened up between classrooms because they, that was the weight room. I mean, they used that whole building for the weight room. So, there is like teachers' offices in there, bathrooms, and then just, I think it's four huge classrooms that's got doors in between the walls. Instead of having to go out in the hall, you've got a opening on both sides. And it's connected with a open breezeway to the office. Because when they were talking about moving my shop, that was gonna be the parks room and the tower room and everything, and they were gonna put tents up in between the A and the B building right there. So.
So, what is our options over here as far as space in the building? Is it all or nothing, or will they lease us a small portion of it for two years? Or will they, you know, partner with us for a year and a half months?
I think, I think their preference is to, to get rid of the whole thing, but.
Their preference.
Yeah.
Not ours.
Right. And so, we didn't get really beyond that. He, I, I think, I remember him telling me that their, their preference is to, to get rid of the whole thing.
But got rid of practice.
Now, they, you know, they have worked that, that agreement with that group and so they may be, be, be open to something else like that if it's temporary.
So, I would say that we, I mean, this is as far as a quick fix. Because Marion's gotta move from there. We know we ain't gonna get it in the next twelve days, but we gotta get moved, set up, and prepared for the next election. So, I don't think we're gonna build anywhere right now in a year and a half, two years to get anybody moved in. So, I think his best case scenario is moving four H here somehow and her take all of that space. And then we, we look into the long-term plan, whatever that means. I don't, I mean, I would just think that the school district would, would wanna partner or help do something, especially that.
They wanna get rid of it.
Well, I'm talking about what, what, um, what department are we promoting here, you know? I mean, if, if that's not a tie-in with the school district as far as school kids and school mission, I don't know what is. So, I, I think not come at it from that angle, but, you know, unless they're saying, no, we're just, we're gonna sell it, that's it. End of story. Then, but if there's, if they're not marketing to sell it right now, I think that would be a, a good conversation to have. How does our four H, you know, this, this is a community-based organization. It's for the, for Jones County. All the kids that are coming to it are coming from the school district, so.
Ideally, the, by the high school would be perfect scenario if they had that.
I say we support them, give them four H and we support them. It's a, it's a Jones County four H program.
Yeah, yeah.
Take your, take your school district head off.
I, I think Boys and Girls Club needs to move, I mean, I think wherever you got four H, and I don't know, who does Boys and Girls Club fall under? And so, did they rent the space at the Knox Center?
No, we actually, we provide that to and free of charge and they get like a thousand dollars every year from us.
Because I mean, if you had four H and Boys and Girls Club side by side, four H is gonna benefit from Boys and Girls Club too, because that's activity that they can at, at the Knox Center, for them. I mean, because they're only in what used to be Miss Middlebrooks, Mr. DeMore. They're only on that one wing right there. Yeah, I just threw back some names there.
Right.
Two are what was thought, four H's thought. They get a feedback?
I, I think they thought it was workable. My concern with the whole thing was just the, the scope of it. It's just a lot.
Sixty thousand square foot?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's not.
I, I wouldn't recommend to you trying to buy out the whole thing if, if that's, if, if they're not willing to carve that, carve out part of it.
The alternative school would be what I would say.
You could get into a lot of money in a hurry trying to fix all that up and.
Well, and y'all can, you just mentioned how much it costs to keep up this old school building.
That building is older than this.
And we're talking about taking on another one that has even more cost and upkeep.
Dawn, just for the record, they're calling us old. You know that, don't you?
I know, yeah, I get called it every day.
I went to school there, so that, you're not.
Well, Dawn and I went to school here. This house, this thing was built in seventy-one?
Sixty-nine, I think.
Sixty-nine.
But you know what it costs to, you know what it costs to keep it?
Concrete block. Most cheaper, more money.
I'm not, I'm not sure if I have the entire four H, that's gonna be enough room.
You got the old, old area though.
Pardon me?
We're gonna, we're gonna take you out, what do, what do y'all call the outhouse?
Yeah. You mean, still have my equipment back there?
Move it up here. Leave it all, under, under this one roof then. You'll have that, that location.
Question.
Yes.
The equipment that's stored in the EMA, the end of the EMA building, if that equipment storage was moved into your space now, the entire area that we're looked at before, and you had this for daily operations and voter, would that be, would that be a sufficient amount of room and have everything centrally located in one building for you? Because you can't, you can't do daily operations and storage in the four H space and call yourself getting ahead in space.
Right. Do you have square footage of that building that we're in?
We've, we've got it here in our notes.
I know, that's what I was just.
I don't think I have the four H.
So, hers is, um.
The EMA storage is what she's looking at. Her area in the EMA storage.
So, hers has got the storage at the Government Center, the storage unit, and then her elections office, that's five eighty-five, three forty-two, and two oh six. But that does not include, or is that crossway back there, the two oh, two oh six, is that what's in the EMA area by that?
I think six ten is the EMA storage room, six hundred and ten square feet. Nineteen eight, nineteen feet, eight inches by thirty-one feet.
Second, I got you. See, that storage room is what she's using there.
Right. Basically, if you swap that into her daily operations room now, plus the storage room next door, would that be enough? That I don't know.
We got another, you said two hundred something square foot. We had to, you know, in the copy room and. I'm just, hey, storage.
I don't want to take two hundred square feet and, and then.
I'm trying to get you over here. I know you wanna stand in this.
If I have that and that, I mean, just all in one building.
Seventeen square feet.
Yeah.
You wanted to go to the dungeon no more. For the, what did you, oh, the outhouse.
The outhouse. Reason we call that, because there's no bathroom back there either. So, it was kind of a joke one day, you know, one of us had.
That's right, since they redid the halls, you can't get, you can't get it anymore, can you?
It has an exit door to it.
So, she's keeping this office over here, the five eighty-five, she's still, she needs, she's got twelve hundred storage now. So, we just need to know how much is the?
Four H.
Four H area. Do we know what that square footage is?
Three, three classrooms is right there, right? Or two?
Yeah, I can go measure it real quick.
Three, that full length is three different classrooms.
It'd be a difference what DA's office is.
It's actually, uh, well, this is two classrooms here.
Buildings, it should be basically the same.
Yeah.
You were over in that part when I was over here.
Alright, so the DA's office now is.
I started in the gym, where, where you're, where you're, uh, tough at in the sixth grade. That's the sixth grade classes where your vote centers.
So, that entire area is twenty-three eighty-four, that's, that's the.
Basketball, that's what I'm saying.
There's two, there was two, uh, two sixth grade classes.
It's seventy-six, that's the one back there where she's at. So, there's a girl that.
I'm in the girl soccer room.
She has seven two forty-five with everything. So, twenty-three eighty-four, we thought that was big, that.
You know, six hundred square feet.
And we're just storage, I mean, if we're just talking storage, that would be one thing, but we need workable space. That, that's a problem. I mean, we can store all kinds of stuff back there, but in order to actually work on it, go in there three months and charge everything, program before every election and digesting. That's why that room is not big enough. I mean, we made it happen, on the one that we have now in EMA.
So, this one, so moving to four H back here would basically give you another space, additional space, the same size you got through office.
Just two offices.
Back here, there's three, right?
Three. Three classrooms.
Three classrooms long.
This is two right here. This is two classrooms right here. So, you're getting ready to, if you got a thing, you go down one more classroom, you'll have the, pretty much the same footprint that sweeps across the hall.
And then keep your office storage there. So, totally gives you about seven hundred square feet more than what you got now. And you got seventeen hundred, so, what, almost a third more than what you got now.
That would be a Band-Aid until we build at the courthouse site.
I think that's the, the quickest. I think that's the, the quickest fix now is 4H over here, and I think we just get, figure out how to do it with the school district, 'cause, you know, for the education.
I actually called, had a call in to Lieutenant Lundey, but I hadn't heard back from him, and then I talked to you and realized that you'd already talked with him.
That gets us our quick fix till, because we, and I do think we need to stay on the courthouse deal over there.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, it's not, courthouse isn't gonna be as quicker.
You're probably looking at five years, if we started talking about it tonight, it'd be five years before you break ground, between plans and funding and all that.
I'm just trying to think like today and now, what we can do, be prepared for two years from now.
Right, we have a twenty-four election upon us in two years, and we need to have this effectively done within six months, so she can be up and running and ready for any special elections that may come.
Any thoughts?
Do we, uh, I think I had a laugh last time I asked about floor plans, I mean, how hard would it be to get a blank, a, an as-built square floor plan of that space? I mean, we pretty much know this, 'cause then we'd say, how's it gonna lay out? 'Cause she needs to know, you know, how's it gonna flow in there, it's one thing to have a big room, but, you know...
Dawn, you told me, y'all had blueprints for the building back there, did you tell me that? Somebody told me that.
No.
Maybe not.
You know, all that seemed so much larger when it was, when I was, when we went to school here, but back there, the room that she's in is the, the ladies locker room, and it seemed big back then, but it's not big what you've got in there. That, that's, it's, everything's piled in there.
Right.
And what I've got in there is just a working shop with a big washing machine and all that, and everything's packed in there. I've got one bathroom, and it backs up every day.
Well, we ain't talking about using that space, so...
Uh, no, I don't guess not, but I, I wasn't being serious with you guys while ago about having the biggest I could get, it's not about that. It's about making room and, and, you know, we needed an EOC here, beyond, I'm the only one in this district or area that doesn't have an EOC. Um, not to say that we haven't gotten along, 'cause we get along just fine when we have a disaster, but I would still, before I retire, I would love to be able to get everybody together in one place when the hoop is hitting the fan, and we all take our part in where we're supposed to be taking our part. And everybody will know what's going down, how much it's gonna cost us, the whole nine yards from start to finish, even when FEMA's in here with us if we ever have FEMA back again. We can recover, but it takes those small little things, like an emergency operations center, and where we can all come together when it does, yeah. I'm, I'm not a office man, to be honest, I don't care nothing about an office, but I'm kinda out of sight, out of mind over here, but, but, um, it seems like we could do a lot better than, than what we've got, but it, I, I'm satisfied where I'm at, and I, I, I appreciate everything that I've got in the last fourteen years, and, um, I mean, I'm thrilled even to think about a new place like that. The Jones is special.
What's our next move?
I think right now we focus on elections to here, 4H to there. And then we look at the assess... Yeah, and then look rest up at it, us of it as a holistic picture.
So now, Superintendent Lundey and say, uh...
What kind of deal come away from that?
Yeah, 'cause like I said, I did make a call, I didn't hear back from him today, but I did make a call today to him, and, uh, but that's, you know, before I realized y'all had already toured that one, but that, that center building would be, you said that center building's the newest of the, of the sections?
Mm-mm, um, the newest is that band room, that little very small square over here right at Dolly Street. That's the newest construction, the bottom one down here at the very corner, that's, that was the shop that got reconstructed into the alternative school, so it's had a lot of work done to it. Um, then, you know, your lunchroom has had a lot of construction there, but the middle building, the silver top, that is a huge, open space that would be, and then they could have their offices actually in the old office there. It's two separate buildings with a walkway in between, but they got good ample parking there or down at the alternative, old alternative building, they have a park, yeah, 'cause there's a parking lot in front of it.
What is that building called?
This big building and the office, and the main office.
Does anybody know if the flooding issues have been resolved in the current 4H building?
Yes, they, um, we, there was, there were certainly issues there, but to our knowledge, we've gotten it fixed.
And would it be a problem, I know right now it has a, a full kitchen, um, yeah, I'd love to have a full kitchen and work, but in, in all reality is wasted space for me, would it be a problem taking that out?
Delete. Kitchen delete.
Is anything else for this work session? I don't think so. Anything from the board? Mary, anything from you? Yes, sir.
I, I know I asked a little while ago about cars and ISO and what we needed to help out. Again, don't have to do this right this minute, but at the next meeting, I'm this one, what things you need from us to get you a little hanging fruit to move us quickly, uh, in that direction? Um, because again, I know we still need fire trucks, right? Um, we're all in a whole training and some other things that we can do within budget right now to help us get closer. So I wanna push that, uh, to help our citizens get better insurance rate, so, not this meeting, but the next meeting, if we could have that for us, that'd be fantastic.
Okay.
Okay.
He said, yes, day long, if you couldn't hear him.
Time is the biggest thing.
And, and I just got a quick question too, you know, we talked about command center tonight, it's not, I'm kinda hearing about it. Are, is a command center more important than the potential three to four fires just we need right now? Or the trust more important than the command center?
He's, he's thinking.
Apparatus is, is priority.
Apparatus is a priority at this point.
Hey, man, I just wanna make sure that keeps me focused, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Just remember, you need to have a place to store those apparatus.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I know there was a comment made about the city station, that, there is no space occupied or accessible space under the city station, it all stops in the back wall, if you ever been in that station. So that's about a twelve, twelve inch or better reinforced, fiber reinforced steel slab.
You think it'd be okay?
I saw it built, so it's...
You know what I'm talking about.
Right, it, right, the weight's fine on that station, so it's not an issue.
All right, anything else?
I don't wanna go through the floor.
No.
I thought you were about making an, uh, indoor swimming pool.
It's no water.
I was thinking about, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to, to exit.
Motion to exit work session, Jim?
Second, all for right?
Shannon's not here, we got all kinds of candy, Jason, you find her stash, she's keeping it from us, right?
Okay, so is there anything you can do, get my girl into something now?
You heard my...
I think, I think it's...
Next morning he's locked shut.
See, this, this, now this building has, for example, as just tile...
Well, okay, Monday first, Tuesday first, Thursday first, Monday.
It's that right there, which you can, you need a capsulator, but it's, uh, it's all the other scripts.
See, here's what I'm thinking, this one, this one, or this one, these are ones that are bad. This one is, this one's pretty, which one are they gonna love that? Wish they'll lie, please do that.
Can't they hear us?
Probably so.
Is it Paul's now?
I'm not saying anything, I don't believe that here, I just don't have a, my God, so I don't know.
I had my bike on during the meeting.
I have, what you have? I'm fairly short in gender, that's why, just Jason doing us some other face, boom, boom, boom. I called, uh, my girl on her spring break last week, she was down at her grandma's, she was down in, we're down in my city, she was just having fun. I'm like, 'cause she comes back Saturday night, stayed home, by Sunday she's bored, so Sunday afternoon she come, about seven o'clock, not watching football. I'm just laying here, man, I'm bored, watching football, can I come see you? And I said, well, it's like seven thirty at night, I mean, you, you can't, but it's...
It's bedtime.
Yeah, I said, by the time you get here, and I, I seen her hair was all messed up, by the time you get here, by the time you get in the, you know, I covered it, getting the baby, I never saw it on, I liked it. By the time something happened on the table, I got like, dang it, you know, and she could hear this back, and she said, hello, Johnny Love? Were you watching football? I love you, bye. I tried to call her, but I tried to FaceTime, she was FaceTiming, I tried to FaceTime her back, and it rang three times, and cut off, I was like...
Hell, my devil.
I didn't know whether that, that, and the next day I texted that, and I said, uh, when I cut off the cell phone, and yesterday I was something, and she's still wanting to come to the club. We go down in the woods, feed the deer, change out the cars and stuff, and she goes, oh, my wife's... She tells my dad, she said, I know she will, dang, she called me, she gets home by three fifteen, by three thirty she called. I'm like, I'm ready whenever you come get me, must've looked good. All right, they killed with their forty-eight apples.
Yeah.
They did kill the young ones, kill the young ones. Yeah. They can do that. They make a piece of camp.
Did you watch Torres's fight?
I watched you. I watched you, and so, you, again, back in time, you might get a GoPro or something, I was like...
I was trying to watch a football game, and...
And get to the other end of the football field.
Get down the river so he could watch it, and then, look, he got mad at me when V Wall right over there, that Jones County hit one, and I was trying to, I was still, and I was going, well, this game didn't look so good.